We do have a forum president and has been through the policy according to the rules of regulations in Texas.
Yes, Mr. Cox is going to lead us tonight.
Dear parents, thank you for this day, thank you for the many blessings that you provide in our lives. And Lord, I ask that you be with the families who has recently experienced some loss to provide comfort and direction in this time of need. Lord, I ask that you provide us with knowledge and wisdom and help us make decisions that are best for our students and our community. And just surround this district and keep us safe from any harm. Jesus name and praise. Amen.
Got a couple special guests to do our...
Claire?
I do. The first student I'm going to call up is Summer Now. Summer is a sixth grader at Nichols Middle School. Her hobbies are fishing, softball, drawing, crafts, creating video games, baking, and going to church. And our next student is Brayden Smith. Brayden is an eighth grader at Nichols Middle School. His hobbies are spending time with God, reading his Bible, baseball, wiffle ball, collecting baseball cards. And he also attends Grace Church in Burleson, Texas. Would everybody please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. To our high school, we have a highly acclaimed model of educational excellence.
Okay, in our workshop, we reviewed our enrollment report, our attendance report, our ADA report, child nutrition report, property tax collection, monthly financial reports, monthly year's debt or debt statement, status of special revenue funds, check write-up, police department reports, our calendar events, our Nichols Middle School bid proposals, and now we'll have our Nichols Middle School campus presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gaby Watson. I'm the principal at Nichols Middle School. And I have my administrative team with me here tonight. Mr. Chris Palmly is one of my assistant principals. And Ms. Christine Morrison, she is also one of my assistant principals. And we're going to share a new program to Nichols Middle School this year, which kind of helps with some behavior expectations on our campus called SOAR.
Yeah, so actually the two students who we brought today are the two top earners in the whole school. I think Summer has 25 buttons she's gotten so far this year, and Brayden's right there behind her with 18. So the students, we noticed that were leading the expectations and kind of those character traits that we want all of our students to instill were kind of flying under the radar. And we wanted to be able to encourage those positive behaviors and kind of get other students on board. And so we started this new button program. And the way that students can earn buttons are a variety of different ways. So each nine weeks, they can get a perfect attendance, A or A B honor roll. If there's no discipline issue, the citizenship button, and then no tardies. That's a big one in middle school. And then weekly, their teachers get to nominate them. And so our motto of SOAR beyond expectations is something that we instill in our students and as our leadership team, not only us but our teachers, we kind of took each letter and determined what are the core things that we want our students to exhibit every time that they're on campus. And so that came down to self-control, taking ownership for not only themselves but the school. Achievement both in and out of the classroom. So you know, if you're making great, great, awesome. But we also wanted to look at our band and our athletics and our theater and choir and really celebrate those students who have had achievements in there as well. Respect is a big one. And then every week, we teach our kids some kind of character trait lesson. And so there is a dare that goes with that. And as teachers, notice kids doing these dares, they can nominate students. And at the end of the week, we do a big celebration during lunches where we award buttons and we read out what kids got nominated for. And so that's what our students have been collecting. And then as the year goes on, we have different rewards depending on how many buttons you earn. And so we have a quick video that is going to give you a little bit more insight into this SOAR program.
I said this to many, many, many people, that 97% of our kids in this school are doing really good things and are really good kids. And they opt to be recognized for it. And so we kind of sat down and talked about where we wanted to go with this. Our motto has always been SOAR beyond expectations. SOAR beyond expectations at Nichols Middle School. And so it just made real good sense to use that SOAR acronym. And I've got some thinking about how do we want to recognize kids for this. And our library club already made these coveted buttons for different things. Kids would kind of sport them on their lanterns. IDs was also a focus. We're hoping to get kids to wear their IDs, to want to wear their IDs. So we just kind of paired them to them and married them and kind of offered that boot that they could collect over the year. We call it SOAR swag.
Okay, so my favorite thing about the SOAR program is probably like just knowing that you've been doing something good. And like sometimes like I've been like, I bought buttons and like, I was like, holy, I didn't see anybody watching. But I was awarded for doing integrity, something good.
I like it. I feel like it helps us get like more active with things going around the school and just more motivated to get buttons. And then when we know we do something good, we have like that feeling, like proud of ourselves for getting that button.
I think that a lot of times that bad behavior is not happening. And I feel like when like this kind of gives like a reward more than like a punishment. So like that's like when you put like a spotlight on the behavior, it's most of the time like bad. But I feel like this like kind of gives a good way on it and it's not as like...
I think it definitely encourages people who don't do it as well, you know, subjects to do better because they get to do the fun things that other people do. When they do kids are strong or are nice to teachers and they're too good. So it encourages them to be better person and learn to get buttons.
I think it also contributes when it comes to academics, like not just with, not just with like your personality. I think like when you do stuff like that, not only help you like achieve more in school, but also like you can become friendlier with people around you. And I think there's a lot more like participation when it comes to class because there's a lot more people who like raise their hand or like board out stuff in class. It's insane.
Another thing coming up from the elementary school, the high school, missing in the middle school was just the opportunity to get off campus and go do something fun. Field trips kind of fall away when you get to middle school levels. So rewarding those good kids for doing good things with a fun day off campus was part of it as well. So and kids are seeing other kids be celebrated. They're watching them eat delicious hamburgers. They're watching them load up on a bus and go to the movies instead of being in class. And they're starting to hopefully want to earn those.
You notice that they are, they're wanting to gain them, like they want the buttons. So anywhere from kids that are doing the character dares that we do for our character lessons, they're always asking, hey, I did this or you know, they're asking me this week about you. I don't know about you. So they're wanting the buttons. They're doing things above and beyond that they would do. And you know, it's improved some behavior. And then it's making kids that didn't necessarily need to do that behavior like notice that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
All right, so that's a little piece in our SOAR program. I want to thank our officer on campus is also definitely a really amazing video person to put stuff together. So he helped build out that video for us. So I'm appreciative to Officer Tom Catherine as well for this year's conference. Thank y'all so much.
Mr. Hickerson, that part of the syllable being for recognition?
All right, our first recognition is Julia Pena. Her members are Joanna Pena and Ariel Pena. And Julia is a senior here at Joshua High School and has achieved a remarkable milestone by being named a finalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program. This prestigious recognition comes after exceptional performance in the 2003 pre-SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, where she placed in the top 1% nationwide. With around 1.3 million students taking the test each year, her accomplishments highlights her hard work, commitment, and academic excellence. Her achievement serves as an inspiration to her peers and reflects the bright future ahead for this talented student. She is now eligible to earn a merit scholar from the program. Our next group is our Joshua High School Theater Department. So our theater department is led by Ms. Lane and Ms. Hertig. The Joshua Theater students traveled to Grapevine, Texas to compete at the Texas Esteban Festival, where they competed in musical duets, solo musical duet acting, and monologue acting. Students received superior scores and qualified for nationals. They will represent JHS in June at Indiana University in Bloomington, Indiana. Jade Trion qualified for nationals in the musical duet and was one point away from a perfect score. He has participated in the theater program for two years. He started in technical theater controlling lights for North Pole's Got Talent and Sound for Charlotte's Web. He started acting his senior year playing Chad in High School Musical and Tom Jones in Tom Jones. Reddine Hearn qualified for national duet acting two years in a row, twenty-three and twenty-four. Reddine has been a participating member of theater for three years. He first portrayed the role of Paul in Moon Over Buffalo, earning an honorable mention UIL one act play cast award and Best Actor at the JHS Theater Banquet. Captain Harry Walsh in Violet Sharp, earning an honorable mention UIL one act play cast award, Gander in Charlotte's Web, and Troy in High School Musical. Ava Miller qualified for nationals. Ava qualified for nationals in duet acting. Ava has participated in the high school theater program for years. She performed as a Duloc Girl in Shrek the Musical. Alina Moon Over Buffalo in Violet, in Violet Sharp, where she earned an All-Star, UIL one act play cast award, and Best Actress at the Joshua High School Theater Banquet. Morgan Anley. Morgan qualified for nationals in musical duet and was one point away from a perfect score. She has participated in the high school theater program for four years. She performed as an elf in Elf Musical, Donkey in Shrek Musical, where she earned the Best Supporting Actress Award at the Theater Banquet, The Nurse in Violet Sharp, Ms. Arabal in Charlotte's Web, Taylor in High School Musical, and is the stage manager in this year's one act play, Tom Jones. Joel Bullard qualified for nationals three years in a row in monologue acting and duet acting. She has been in the theater program for four years. She performed as an elf in Elf Musical, The Nurse, and?
Antigone.
Antigone, where she received an All-Star, honorable mention, cast award, Newcomer of the Year at the JHS Theater Banquet, The Godmother in Shrek the Musical, Ethel in Moon Over Buffalo, Edith in Charlotte's Web, Betty in Violet Sharp, and Ms. Darbuss in High School Musical. She has performed with the Carnegie Players on Cleveland. Our next group is our all-state band students. All right, these students, yeah, these students are led by our director Ross Langdon. Three high school band students have bated the TMA, TMEA five A all-state band. They just participated in the clinic convention in San Antonio last week from February twelfth through the fifteenth. The audition process comprises of seventy thousand students, and about eighteen hundred students are selected to perform in eighteen all-state ensembles. I'm the lead. Mr. Langdon, elaborate on that, because I know this is a very big deal.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, we just got back from San Antonio. And you know, it was a life-changing experience for these three students. They got to play with the best musicians in the state of Texas from all over the state. They got to play extremely challenging music. And you know, they also got to experience going to the exhibits. And this is a convention that everybody in the United States goes to from all over the United States. And so they got to not only rehearse at this convention, stay in a hotel, have meals paid for. I think the first night we took them out to Fogo de Chow, just to kind of, just let them just kind of experience what it's like to be one of the best musicians in the state of Texas. And this is not only a life-changing experience for them going into college, but this is a lot of scholarship opportunities for them. I think the last all-state musician at Joshua was twenty-twenty. And Mr. Smoot could probably tell me, but it's been a little while for a multi-all-stater. And that's just the dedication, not only what Mr. Smoot has done for this band program before me, but also these great musicians. So they're, they did an amazing job. We have Shane Waits on contra bass in my neck. You can step forward to be recognized. Kethon Turbo on trumpet. Joey Yule on alto saxophone.
Our next group is our Sweetheart Dance Team. Led by Ms. Barnett and Ms. Blinney. And our Sweetheart Dance Team received these awards at the Showtime International Dance Competition in January. Best in category Team Jazz, Best in category Team Palm, Best in category Team Novelty, Supreme Routine Team Novelty, Highest Score of the Day for the entire contest, First Place Elite Team Routine, Team Sweet States, The Judges Award for High Score, and Contest Brand Champions. And Ms. Barnett, would you now introduce your Sweetheart Dancing?
Okay, we're going to start with Allison Arguenez, Talen Blaylock, Brynlee Burns, Izzy Cartwright, Aurora Flores, Emerson Gartner, Addison Green, Cassidy Grimes, Emma Hall, Calla Jenkins, Madison Jensen, Iris Semenes, Hadley Jones, Fernanda Lavia, Kristen Loggery, Diana Lopez, Harley Ann Loomis, Emily Martinez, Dresden May, Allison McIntosh, Jennifer Lott, Isabella Perez, Wesley Pate, Alexis Patlin, Ashlyn Pelham, Ryan Green, Gregson Richardson, Haven Ricks, Anna Rios, Emily Rios, Holly Robinson, Caitlin Stendhal, Liz Ishnet, Abigail Silva, Sarah Tarkowski, Lila Thomas, Deanna Thompson, Abigail Towe, Lily Tompkins, Bethany Torres, Braylon Turbo, Kristen Whitworth, and Julie Neer.
In addition to that, we have some Division One solos. Brynlee Burns, Talen Jenkins, Lala Thomas, Dresden May, Izzy Cartwright, and Talen Blaylock.
This is a board meeting that we offer opportunity. Do we have anybody signed up? Emily, anybody sign the form? Moving on.
Okay, so within our consent agenda items, we've got our previous amendments from our January thirteenth meeting. No budget amendments at this time. We do have a purchase over fifty thousand. That is what was built in within our budget as a computer refresh for our campuses, desktop computer refresh. That's a back deck for one hundred and seventeen thousand. And that was built in with our budget this year. So my recommendation is to approve consent items as discussed.
I make a motion we approve the consent items as discussed.
By Ms. Cook, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Seven up. Subject C, Consider Audit Firm for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five year-end financial audit.
So each of the districts required to have an external audit performed on its financial statements. And management recommends continuing to engage with Snow Garrett Williams as a district auditor going forward for twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five year-end financial audits. I believe we've been utilizing Snow Garrett Williams for quite a long time. So my recommendation would be to approve Snow Garrett Williams as a district financial auditor for the twenty-four, twenty-five year-end financial audit.
I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion we continue with Snow Garrett Williams as our auditor.
Kevin Lee made a motion there, second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Seven up. Subject C, Consider RFQ twenty-three dash zero zero one for professional services for various categories of pool.
Okay, so this, the district issued a request for qualifications for professional services by various categories to support the ongoing upping district operational capital improvement projects. Twenty-six proposals were received with twenty-four eligible for evaluation by the district committee based on deadline criteria and scoring matrix. Some of those categories include asbestos, geotechnical materials testing, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And so this gives us a pool of professional services to call upon. So my recommendation is to approve the pool of professional services by category fingers, I think.
I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve Subject C as stated.
A motion by Ms. Brian Watson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Qualified by Mr. Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or requests? All favor. Seven up. Day, Consider Approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar.
Okay, three calendar options were created and distributed to all staff. Staff is then met with their campus improvement committees. We also generate that information to our Allen Pride Committee. There are two options, there are two options for calendars that we're bringing to you tonight. Option one is the exact same calendar as we had this school year. And option two, the only difference on option two, it extends past Memorial Weekend because of allowing a high school to receive some of their test scores back from the state. And so it allowed us kids an opportunity to walk. I will say that majority of staff favors option one. It's similar to what we had in addition to our calendar. Our families were at eighty-two percent in favor of the four-day, continued in the four-day school week, seven percent kind of unsure, with twelve percent that was not in favor. And then staff was at ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent in favor of the four-day school week. Okay, do I have a recommendation?
Go ahead.
No, I make a motion that we approve the option one for the upcoming calendar.
Second.
Option B, by Ms. Meyer Cook. Any further discussion or requests? Teacher, make sure, sure that you don't want to go back to the spot. All favor. Seven up. Consider Approval of Low Attendance Day Waiver for Cattle Grove Elementary on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five started out a little crazy that morning at Cattle Grove Elementary. It appeared what was potentially a gas leak ended up being a heat exchanger on one of the HVAC units. In regards to that, some of our parents decided to keep their children at home, which resulted in the daily attendance for that day being at eighty-one point nine percent, which is well below the ten percent threshold. So the Texas Education Agency allows us to, or to apply for a waiver when it falls below that ten percent threshold from the previous year's ADA, which for us as a district was at ninety-four point six percent. And so we took this waiver to the Allen Pride Committee. The Allen Pride Committee made the recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve the application for the low attendance day waivers. My recommendation would be to approve the waiver.
I hear a motion.
Motion we approve the waiver.
Motion by Kevin Lee, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or requests? All favor. Seven up. Subject G, Consider Approval of the Southwestern Adventist University Morandum of Understanding.
Okay, so this MOU, Morandum of Understanding, allows us to have students come in and do student teaching, internship. and do student teaching internships and any related educational experiences for that students if they're enrolled in the education educator preparatory program at SWAU. And this MOU would be in effect for five years with the option of a yearly review every year. So my recommendation would be to approve the Southwestern Adventist University memorandum of understanding.
Can I have your motion?
I make a motion we approve subject F as presented.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, can I have your second? Second, Mr. Watson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Seven up. Consider Approval and memorandum of understanding between Tarleton State University, Joshua Independent School, Dirsey, or to Tarleton today.
Okay, so this is another memorandum of understanding. This is now a Tarleton State University, which allows our students to enroll in dual credit leadership course. This partnership allows them during college credit and high school credits upon successfully completing the dual credit course. I believe it's fifty dollars per credit hour for the Tarleton program, which then pending the Texas status program, funding reimbursement, the possibility for those students that are within three or reducing lunch to have that course reimbursed. And so my recommendation would be to approve the memorandum of understanding between Tarleton State University and Joshua Independent School.
Can I have your motion?
I'll make a motion we continue with the Tarleton State.
Motion by Mr. Kevin Lee.
Second. He took my, took my motion, I told him.
You can switch them if you need.
I didn't know it was gonna get it. All favor. Seven up. Consider Tasked Update one twenty four affecting local policy.
Okay, so this update affects CAA local fiscal management goals and objectives, financial ethics, CDA local under revenues, investments, CY local intellectual property, DH, DH local employee standards of conduct, EHB local groupland design special programs, EHBB local special programs, get to the talented students, FFG local student welfare, child abuse and neglect, GKA local community relations and conduct on premises. This includes revisions to the local policy. Explanatory notes were presented during workshop. These are very minor changes. That includes, for instance, removing DESME from superintendent or DESME to just superintendent. So my very minute changes within these policies, within these policies. And in addition to that, these were shared and verified with each department within our administration office. To make sure that there were no big changes. So my recommendation would be approve the revisions to the JST local policies as recommended in the update one twenty four.
Can I have your motion?
Second. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Cook. Any further discussion? All favor. Seven up. I consider a memorandum of understanding between Joshua ISD NJ ROTC unit and the Department of the Navy.
Okay, back to our memorandum agreements here. We've got the first one with the standard Department of Defense agreement applicable to all JR ROTC programs. And the second is specific to the Navy. It's an addendum to the Navy NJ, or Navy JR ROTC programs. My recommendation would be to approve the MOU between Joshua ISD and the Department of Defense and Navy.
I make a motion we approve the MOU between Joshua ISD and the Department of the Navy.
Motion by Mr. Cook, can I have your second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Seven up. Okay. Consider Approval of bed proposals for Nichols Middle School.
Okay, our construction manager, Cliff Holden, presented these during our workshop. There was discussion over the HVAC options between option three using the AON RTUs and the AON controls in JSE versus option four using Linux RTUs and the Distec controls. What you're getting with AON is ten years parts and warranty, labor and warranty. What you're getting with Linux is just ten years warranty compression and ten year parts. In addition to that, AON, you have the fifteen year aluminum heat exchanger warranty and the twenty five year stainless steel heat exchanger warranty. And in addition to Linux, you're getting a fifteen year stainless steel heat exchanger and a one year of labor warranty. Any recommendation?
Any further?
I make a motion that we approve option three for our HVAC system.
Motion by Mr. Cook, can I have your second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Seven up.
Yeah, sorry. Recommendation would be to approve the nickel based dish proposals. Yes, you have the sheet in front of you that covers all the initial programs for this school, for Nichols Middle School. Looking second construction.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Nichols base proposals here on the spreadsheet.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hunter Gardner, can I have your second?
Second.
Mr. Kevin Lee, second by Mr. Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Seven up. Y'all haven't completed, glad you asked.
They told me.
Okay. Open session, I'm waiting for a turn, we're going to a meeting, open session to discuss items authorized. Don't make a direct text. Five five one, dash four, zero, zero, one, dash five, five, one, dot, zero, eight, four. And here's thirty five, seventy five.
All right, so we need to consider accepting the donation of land that is described as eighteen point zero five acres located in the RF3 survey abstract nine seven eight Johnson County, Texas. Be a get deed attached and this is WB Joshua Land LLC who's going to donate that land to Joshua ISD. So my recommendation would be to accept that donation of land.
Okay, I hear motion.
Make a motion when we accept the property.
Got motion by Mr. Corden D. You hear second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryan Watson. Any further discussion or questions?
All favorable.
Seven no.
All right, last thing we looked at was the staff retirements resignations.
I make a motion when we adjourn.
Second. You only got like one or two left and you're trying to get out of here.